Since everyone else, he's gonna start putting us up live. So people can see us start the meeting.
We can't hear that.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. All right, we would like to call our meeting to order tonight. And then move on to our next item, which is to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of a particular person. Need a motion to go to executive session?
I moved in.
Back to Louise.
Great, then we will move into executive session.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They all motioned yes. All right.
Hi.
Supposed to be Ethan. Hi Ethan. Okay, so Ava, I'm just gonna tell you what's gonna happen, okay? In a minute, I'm gonna start the meeting. I'm gonna read a long thing and then I'll introduce you and then it'll be over to you to do the pledge, okay?
Okay.
You all set?
We're all set, we're all set Sharon, whenever you're ready.
All right. So we'd like to call our regular meeting to order at this time. I'd like to welcome all who've come to observe the meeting of the Iroquois Central School District's Board of Education. There are two periods of recognition of guests listed on the meeting agenda. The first is for comments regarding agenda items. The second is for topics not on the agenda. Speakers may offer comments related to school operations and programs, but the board cannot hear personnel complaints against any individual associated with the school system. Please address these concerns to the appropriate administrator. If you wish to be recognized, please make sure you've filled out the appropriate form and turn it into the district clerk. As per policy fifteen fourteen, public participation at board meetings, public comment is limited to fifteen minutes total unless the board suspends this limit. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. Additionally, no more than three people may speak on a single topic unless the board also waives this limitation. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means that we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. District personnel will follow up with you regarding your concerns. Rest assured that we are listening carefully and take seriously what you have to say. Please demonstrate respect by speaking to the issues, sharing ideas and opinions, but not engaging in personal attacks. The board appreciates your willingness to share your concerns and celebrations. Please also be advised that this meeting is being streamed live and the recording will be posted on the Iroquois website. And with that, we have some guests tonight to get us started at our meeting to do the pledge. We're gonna hand it over to Ava, who is a fourth grader at Alma Primary. So take it away Ava.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. And our next report will be one of my favorite parts of the, of the night, and that is our student report. And we have Ethan and Reese, who are middle school students who are here. Thank you for coming guys, who are here to share with us a report of what's going on at the middle school.
Hi, I'm Ethan Shaw from the eighth grade Da Vinci team. From Ms. Ballower of the middle school library. First, the middle school library has received a three hundred dollar grant from the School Librarians Association of Western New York. The funded grant is going to be used in order to revamp the organization within the nonfiction section. New categorization, labels and signage will make it easier for students to find books they're interested in reading. Second, there are a number of student authors in the middle school. In order to give them support with their writing projects, a virtual writing workshop is arranged with Judy Bradbury, a local author. Lastly, we have a virtual author visit scheduled with Gordon Corman. Mr. Nowsky has a visit schedule for grade five on Tuesday, April twenty seventh. There's a session scheduled Wednesday, April twenty eighth for anyone interested in grade six through twelve. The session will be recorded if students can't make it at the scheduled time. Later this week, a book order form will be sent in case students are interested in purchasing autographed books.
Hello, my name is Ree Spider and I'm on the eighth grade team Da Vinci team. For Mr. Abair running the drama club. This year, the drama club looks a little bit different in the middle school. Instead of a full production, students will be participating in a review featuring some favorite songs from past productions. Choreography rehearsals are happening in person in multiple locations, allowing students maintain social distancing using pool noodles. Vocal rehearsals are being conducted virtually, allowing students to sing freely unmasked. This is all made possible with the help of many high school volunteers who have adapted to the middle school to mentor students. The completed production will be professionally recorded and filmed and provided to the students and their family.
Now from our SGB. SGB is sponsoring spring pictures. March twenty third is for cohort A and C and March twenty sixth is for cohort B. Kids that are a hundred percent remote can come either day between the hours of eight to eleven thirty AM and twelve thirty to two PM.
From Mrs. Carlson running the fitness club. The fitness club opened their doors on March second and will be meeting every week throughout each month. The club is open to all students, grades five through eight, who want to learn to be more physically fit by participating in the fitness center, gym or outside areas. The fitness club also helps students catch better eating habits by talking about the different food groups and by offering samples of healthier snacks each month. The club is also in line to host a kids in the kitchen program, again sponsored by the Food Bank of Western New York, where students will learn about different types of foods and get to come right in.
Now for some sports action. Fall season two sports will be starting Monday, March twenty second. The sports starting are volleyball, football and cheerleading. I'm excited for these sports to continue because I play for the modified volleyball team. I would like to thank you all for letting these sports continue after restrictions in the fall.
And finally, SCL Live Social Emotional Learning is a show with different segments that we watch in home days on Tuesdays and Fridays. This show is produced by Coach Jacobs, Mrs. Boncheck, Mrs. Arkanapande and Mrs. Slade. There are different segments in each of the broadcasts. We have seen different home bases star in some segments. One part that appears every episode is Slade on the street. Often, Mr. O'Brien is an SCL guest star. SCL Live is a fun way to learn something during extra long home days on Tuesdays and Fridays. This highlights what's been going on in the middle school for the past couple months.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It's so exciting to hear right, right directly from you guys. This is, it is, I've said it before, it is one of my favorite parts because, first of all, I love the pool noodle with the choreography. That's hysterical, I've seen pictures of that, looks great, very creative. And I can't believe you guys are having a visit with Gordon Corman. That is pretty impressive, that is very exciting. You may have a stray board member. Let's have to watch the video, that looks really exciting. So, thank you for sharing with us. And Ava and Ethan and Reese, you are welcome to stay for our board meeting if you would like to. But we know that you probably need to rush off and do lots and lots of homework. So we will not be offended if you leave now. But you are welcome to stay if you want. So, thank you for taking part of your night to join us, we really appreciate it. And we'll be moving on with our meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll be moving on to our board discussion. And as we get started in board discussions today, you know, there are a lot of conversations going on in our community and communities around, around our state and our country. Discussions about schools and schools opening, reopening, and what are the best procedures to follow? So I would, I wanted to just get the, get conversations started by just a, it kind of just a reminder for everybody and a reminder for people who may not know how those decisions are all made. We, we had this conversation in the summer when we were looking at the fall reopening. And now as, you know, we've passed that one year mark, I know everybody is looking for when that will happen and what will happen. But just a reminder that the board are speaking, we'll have conversations that are really acting as ambassadors for the community. We know that there are lots of different opinions in our community and when the board discusses this, it's really an opportunity for those to be heard. And it is not, the reopening policies are not something that the board has ever or that the board will be voting on. Decisions about that are really made by the district administration, which is, you know, Mr. Schofield and all of the administrators in the district. So just as when people give their comment to the school district, this is a chance for the board's input. But just so that people are aware of, of how that works, just a little bit of a reminder for everybody. But I will open it up and are there items that people would like to share in or discussion or news worth sharing?
Yes, I'd like to share quite a few items that are happening with Erie County School Boards. First off, we've had our On Target workshops. We had Solar Liberty on Monday night, they did a phenomenal presentation. We actually have two more coming up in April. One is with CMS companies and they will be doing a STEAM STEM program. And John W. Danforth will also be in April. Legislatively, we've been extremely busy. In fact, in the last two weeks, I've had meetings that I've been able to set up with Assemblyman Burke, Assemblyman Conrad, Assemblyman Rivera and Monica Wallace. And we actually have Karen McMahon that we will be meeting with on Friday. We've also met with Senator Galavan and Senator Raff. And it was nice to see the one house budget bills come out. And in both budgets, we were asking for the legislators to increase the amount that we can carry through in the fund balance reserve. And one of the budgets increased it to point six and one increased it to point eight, right? Or eight percent and six percent. Currently it's four percent. Also, we were urging them not to use federal money to take the place of the state money. And that actually appeared in both budgets, so we're happy with that. We also asked them not to eliminate prior year adjustments. We were on a call with one of the districts, for example, and they are owed six hundred thousand dollars. And one of our co-legislators used the example like, well, it's not like I can just call up my credit card company and say, yeah, I don't have the money, so I'm not gonna pay you, right? You know, the state owes us that money, right? And so they need to pay that money. Also, we were, we didn't even ask, all right? But both bills are asking for full funding of the formula within three years, which we were amazed at that one. And we were asking for them not to combine expense aid categories, that was in both budgets. And we also talked about the two percent tax increase being a straight two percent. There are some districts that have to get a sixty percent vote, even if they have a negative tax impact, which makes no sense whatsoever. So, some of the legislators were gonna continue to look into that. The legislators, they've all been very helpful. Some of the legislators have asked about what type of funding we would need for remedial summer work. They've asked about what our thoughts were on teacher center, center funding. And they wanted to know if we have the capability to quickly survey our membership when an issue comes up. One individual indicated that they would be bringing to legislation, and we have not seen the bill yet, to reduce social distancing from six feet to three feet. And they will be taking that forward because that's really the state government that's setting those guidelines right now that we have to follow. Also, the other thing is that we were finding out on all of these calls, you know, there's not a school around us that doesn't want kids to come back to school full time, right? However, they are being cautioned by their insurance companies, they're being cautioned by their attorneys. And another thing is Senator Galavan actually has a bill and there's a companion bill, which has to do with setting up a special reserve fund. And that would be very helpful. We don't imagine that's going to come before the budget, but after the budget, we're going to be focused on that. And actually, Assemblyman Monica Wallace, she reached out to me earlier in the week. And she will be setting up a Zoom meeting with following assembly people. Crystal Peoples Stokes, Patrick Burke, John Rivera, Karen McMahon and Bill Conrad. And they wanna know what is going to be needed for schools to go, you know, full participation, you know, a hundred percent. And again, some of those will be reducing the distance from six feet to three feet. Another issue that we've talked about is having all staff vaccinated, which was very interesting. The Seidel call, the guest speaker was Rebecca Small from the Rochester City School District's superintendent. They actually had the county come in and vaccinated all their teachers. There are actually two districts in the North Towns and they've had drugstores reach out to them and they are coming in and vaccinating all of their staff members. So it was just, you know, amazing to hear that. Also on the call will be Mike Cornell, Hamburg superintendent, and he's also president of Erie Niagara School Superintendents. And that meeting will be taking place at eight thirty Friday morning. So, we'll see where we go with that. Also, I just wanted to mention the prospective school board workshop is March twenty seventh. We currently have eighteen people that are registered. On the twenty first, we will be, April twenty first, we'll be having a program from Bosse's, A Slice of Education. And it's a little unique in that part of it will be pre-recorded. After the pre-recorded part takes place, people will then have an opportunity to talk live with employees from Bosse's and ask questions. And prior to the meeting, between nine AM and two PM that day, people will stop at Bosse's, they will pick up a pie. So it's our dessert form, they'll pick up a pie that is baked by students at Erie One Bosse's and they'll go to one of the four centers to pick up the pie. Erie County School Boards will be donating a ten dollar gift card to Tim Horton, so people can get their coffee too, all right? And we'll have a dessert form virtual style. Another thing is Senator Kirsten Jillibrand will be in on Friday in the area. And she will be doing a press conference on the community school funding. And so I was working with a school district to set up that location today. So she will actually be working at about one thirty, she will be doing a press conference from the Harkness Center over by the airport. Let's see what else. Also, we are changing, as you know, Dr. Jill O'Malley left as the Associate Director for Erie County Association of School Boards. We are revising the position and it will be a Program Services Manager. And it will range anywhere from between a point four position to a point five position. Most likely a ten month position with majority of the work being advocacy. And we'll be looking for individuals that have either advocacy experience or experience working with school boards. So, watch for that posting, we'll post it internally among all school board members and through ECASB, but we'll also be publishing that in the Buffalo News. So if you have anyone that might be interested or you think would fit the bill, tell them to be watching for that. Lastly, the Western New York Law Conference, we said save the date for August eleventh and twelfth. There's a correction on that, we'll actually be starting the first day on August tenth. We don't know whether we'll go on August tenth and eleventh or August tenth and twelfth and give everyone a break in between. But the Western New York Law Conference, Jay Rona from New York State School Boards will be speaking to the entire group on the tenth. So that's why we moved it back one day. Other than that, we've been very busy, Erie County School Boards.
Well, it's just a reminder, when we hear the, the news that you're sharing, it's a reminder to everybody how important it is right now to contact their legislatures and let their opinions be known on all the things that are facing our school. I just, I don't see a, it seems like an absolutely critical time. So now is the time for everybody to reach out and do that and express their opinion. Other news worth sharing or discussion items?
I happened to be on the call with Senator Galavan and it was really interesting because they are incredibly receptive. And like Dave said, the legislators are doing their best to push the state to revisit the, the data that they have and, you know, hopefully look at both the twelve feet for music and six feet for everybody else. And, you know, that, that change will be enormous. And I know that everybody in the administration is, has a plan in place, so when that does happen, we'll be ready. But, it's good. Oh, you know what, actually, there was one other special reserve fund. And Dave, you mentioned like they were, they said there was a proposal for a reserve fund. And my understanding was it was for special education? Is that correct? Like they were?
Yes, it was, yes, it was proposed by Senator Galavan and Senator George Barella. He's down in the Jamestown area. And so I actually found it when I was looking on Bill Track fifty. We did not ask for it, they actually proposed it. And when we were on the phone with Senator Galavan, we asked for an update. And he said that it has not gone, gone anywhere, it's still in committee. And when we were actually on with Assemblyman, Assemblyman Patrick Burke, we were asking him about it. And he said he would be glad to sign on. And then we actually found that there is a companion bill in the assembly that will actually hopefully be moving forward. So we're thinking both of them will be moving forward after the budget gets settled on the thirtieth.
That's great. And it is crazy that school districts have to fall, like that two percent tax cap is so misleading that it's not a two percent increase in the budget. It's a calculation that's done and can sometimes end up an actual negative number. And you still have to fall within that. So I'm glad they're looking at that.
And we were not asking for it to go away. We know that it's a good safeguard to the taxpayers. We know that we can work within it, all right? But on the other hand, when they take other factors into it where some districts have had a negative tax increase and then they have to get a sixty percent vote to pass that, it makes no sense whatsoever.
Right. And it's confusing for people because there are times when that two percent actually shows an increase of more than two percent in your tax bill. And there are times when it's a reduction. So it's not two percent across the board the way it has always been described. And it'll be nice to have that clarification.
Any other discussion, anybody in person? No? Nope.
Nope, they're all set.
Okay.
Took me a minute to realize in-person men.
Thank you for all the detailed updates of what's going on, that's helpful to hear. All right, we will be moving on to our presentation this evening. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Dudak for her presentation on the Iroquois Business Academy.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Whalen, Mrs. House, Mrs. Corto and Mrs. Langhier. And I believe a student, Tiana. This project, we're really excited because I think we first sat down about two and a half years ago to begin discussion of updating our business academy. And every one of these individuals has poured their heart and soul into the project and we're really very, very excited. So, Mrs. Langhier.
Thank you. Verbal is good. Good evening, my name's Alexis Langhier and I'm one of the high school assistant principals. One of the wonderful projects and processes that I've been able to be involved in since joining Iroquois High School this past year has been working very closely with this team that I'm about to introduce again. Before I go into that, please allow us to thank you so much for this time tonight. We know that there is so much going on all the time and the board is quite busy. But we are so thrilled to share with you the progress, as Dr. Dudak just alluded to, the progress that has been made, the process that we've gone through. And I think we are all especially excited for you also to hear from one of our students tonight as well. So thank you for your time. Just wanna first introduce the team. Here to my right, I have Mr. Whalen. Mr. Whalen is actually the Iroquois Business Academy advisor. And he has been a business teacher with Iroquois for twenty plus years. And it's been a pleasure to work alongside him in this process. Stacy House, who is one of our business teachers, prior to being a business teacher here with Iroquois. She was actually a math teacher also with our district. And before that, she actually worked in industry at Fisher Price. And certainly she's been a great member of our team as well. Nancy Lambert, who couldn't join us tonight, I do wanna draw special attention to her as well. She is Department Chair for Business and Technology and Family and Consumer Sciences. And she was also a hugely contributing member to this team. And then Sherri Corto, who is here tonight, she is one of our school counselors who works up at the high school and has joined us in this process as well with a lot to provide expertise and input and different perspectives from the student wellness side, career and goals side, as well as scheduling. So that's been a huge component. And tonight, we also have Tiana or Tia Shelby, who is a ninth grade student, who's going to speak with us as well. First, I want to commend this team. They have gotten together in the midst of a very challenging year that we all know. They've gotten together almost weekly for an hour plus to really, first and foremost, reflect on the existing business academy. As Jim's gonna talk about, there is a rich history to this academy. Wonderfully, we weren't starting from scratch, we were starting from a really good place. But we did want to spend the first half of this year, we really reflected on that rich history. We reflected on the classes that we have, the, the new classes that have been added in recent years and the direction that we wanted to go to. And taking that time to really reflect, to think critically, to look at other programs at other neighboring schools and consider all the options is the process that this group really went through to develop what we are confident is going to be an excellent next step for the Iroquois Business Academy and most especially our students who have the opportunity to go through this program. With that in mind, so you can see, we've got several things to share, but we are being cognizant of time, so don't worry about that. First and foremost, we went back to the beginning. We said, well, what's our vision for this program? What are we here to do? What do we wanna offer our students? And collectively, we developed this vision statement. It is our purpose to offer a sustainable and prestigious academy in which students can develop business and professional skills related to their personal interests and career goals. And as we looked at this and we developed this vision, one of the key parts that we really talked about is that many students are very interested in business. And we are so excited for them to offer, for them to enrich their understanding through our courses of what that looks like and what that means. But we also know that there are many students who are gonna graduate from Iroquois High School without that same interest. But they, we want to help them develop their own career goals, their own interests. Because as we all know, regardless of what you end up doing as a career path, our students are going to end up either working for a company or owning their own. In every capacity, we all work for businesses or organizations. And we wanna help prepare our students to have those soft skills that we talk about so often, those transferable skills, and develop their own interests as they proceed through this. And so we see our academy as an excellent opportunity for our students to develop both the business skills and the professional skills related to their own interests and be able to move forward with that. And with that in mind, there's, the best person to speak to that tonight is going to be Tia herself. So Tia is one of our ninth grades. So Tia is one of our ninth grade students at the high school. Wonderfully, as you hear this list, I hope you are as amazed as I am and enjoy hearing from her. She is a very active student. So in addition to being in business classes this past year, she has already been in multiple sports programs in our high school program. So she plays for the field hockey team. She's been a part of the indoor track club as they prepare for outdoor track season. In addition to that, she really loved being a part of the drama club in the middle school. And so what has she done? She's gone back and helped that same drama club even this past year. She's part of our lead group at the high school, which has done a lot of wonderful activities both for our schools in the district as well as for groups outside of our district. And she's part of the Girls STEM Club, Girls, excuse me, Girls Leadership and STEM Group. And so she is certainly, as you can hear from that list, making strides to develop her own goals, develop her own skills. But we thought it would be great for you to hear from her about her experience in one of our brand new classes this year and her, why she was interested in the business academy. Tia?
Hi, my name is Tiana Shelby and I had the opportunity last semester to be a part of Mrs. House's Intro to Business class. The class went over lots of different aspects of business such as marketing, management, administration, and finance. One of my favorite parts about that class is it did touch base in lots of different aspects. So I gotta have a broad understanding about all the different fields that I could go into. When I first went into the class, I wanted to get into physical education and I mostly did the class just to learn about business. But after completing the course, I realized that I really have an interest in marketing. Another thing that goes along with this is Business Academy. The Business Academy is going to give me the opportunity to thrive in the business world and not just in the classes. Yes, the classes can like get me prepared for the future, but the Business Academy is my future. It's going to give me connections in the real world of business and give me opportunities to work with people who have a business around us in our community. Another thing that goes along with the Business Academy is you can get college credits. And these college credits can help me thrive in college. One of the main reasons why I decided to go into the academy is because I wanted to not only learn about business, but I also wanted to see how it works in the outside world and see how I could thrive in that community and really just get an understanding of everything. Next year, I'm going to take marketing and I am so excited for my future in high school. So I can take all the other classes that are offered. I was really thrilled with how the business, Intro to Business course went because we had so many amazing opportunities such as a food truck lab that was really fun. And we got to develop those skills and talk with people who actually had a food truck. So we got to see how you actually develop it and how it works in the real world. I really hope that the Business Academy can be part of our Iroquois High School's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Tia.
Wow. How do I follow that up? Ninth?
I don't know. You might as well just clap and sit down.
I was just going to say, I don't, I don't think we need to say anymore, do we? Ninth grade. Terrific. Thank you so much. And I'm so happy you're part of the academy. I really am. And again, thank you so much for inviting us in to talk to you about our new and improved academy. Before we go into that, I also think it's important that you know a little bit about the old academy. It is nothing new. I don't know if everybody knows that. We've had an academy here for almost twenty-five years, started with Jack Burley and Fred Willey. There's a name from the past. But you know, they started this thing and within that timeframe, we've graduated over three hundred students. We've, which equates to about three thousand college credits, about four hundred thousand dollars in tuition savings and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships that these kids have gotten over the years. Along the way, we have had a number of highly successful people come out of the academy and gone into their professions, including a number of, of students that are working for the Big Four accounting firms. One of our early grads, older grads is now in a, an award-winning investigative reporter for one of the local television stations. Another one's a director of operations for the Kansas City Chiefs. Another is who I just talked to the other day is now the chief financial officer for one of the local healthcare companies. Another one is a president of a construction company and development company in Washington DC. So I tell you the old, because you might be thinking here right now, you know, looks like it's been pretty successful. Why, why are we looking to make all these changes? And the answer to that is simply change is good. Change is a necessity in business and in education. And so we're looking at this as kind of a breath of fresh air that's being blown into our academy. That's going to help our students to achieve even more than they already have. So if I can bring your attention to the, to the slide to just talk about a little bit about what Alexis had mentioned as far as transferable skills, what we have done thus far is talk to a lot of the stakeholders in the community, a number of business people, a number of, a number of people that are on our advisory board. We listen to the, what they need in the workplace. What kinds of skills do our students need to graduate in order to be successful in the workplace? And some of them are listed on here, but especially the communication skills. Oh my gosh, this phone thing has been, has knocked our communication skills down with our kids. You know, and, and you know, the networking skills, the critical thinking skills, the problem solving skills. These are all the important things that we are teaching in our classes. And so that really, you know, explains kind of what our goals are overall. To implement all of those kinds of soft skills and, and essential skills into every one of our classes. Okay. So, and then we're going to talk a little bit about the offerings themselves and that's from Stacy.
Thank you. So as we were going through and looking at what updates we wanted to make to our academy, one of the things we realized, which we always knew, but we have many different students doing many different pathways in their high school career. And with that, that takes a lot of the students and it's a lot of time in their junior and senior year, for example, BOCs, Harkness, those types of programs. So we wanted to ensure that we were an inclusive program and that we gave every student in our high school the same opportunity and to be successful in our academy. So we came up with this access meets opportunity where we have a a two-prong approach here, two different levels of membership within the academy. So for those students that are in those programs, they can still be in our academy, academy with the primary membership. So with that primary membership, they would have to take four and a half credits, which I'll talk about the classes that can go into that in a little bit. But they would take the four and a half credits and then they would receive an academy certificate. With that, we strongly encourage them to do an internship, but we know sometimes transportation can be an issue. So two job shadows would also, either or would be required for the primary membership. For those that are eager to go full bore business in their high school career, we offer the platinum membership. And that's taking six plus credits within the business program. With that, they would belong to the Business Honor Society. And with that, we bumped up the job shadows to three and also the internship. We're highly encouraging, but either or would work for the platinum membership. And then I'll turn it.
So this is sort of an overview of all the courses in our business department. And this is right here, the four level pathway that we would look to for optimal completion of the Business Academy. So looking at all four levels, there are some classes that you'll notice that we want students to take. So some of those courses would be mandatory for students. And then others are electives that students can choose based on their interest level, based on which membership they are a part of, whether they're, they're here for the primary membership or the platinum membership. So looking at those, we also want to focus in on the internships and the job shadows, making sure that those are, are a requirement for, for either of them. And Stacy's going to talk about all the new courses that we're offering.
So you'll see at the top for level one, we have Intro to Business as Tiana spoke to, that was just recently our first run at it this fall. And we had approximately sixty students go through it for the first time being offered here at Iroquois, which I thought was pretty amazing. That's our entry level class into the Business Academy. And then College Success Skills is to the right. College Success Skills we're offering to seniors only in the fall. And that class is currently being offered now, but we're going to obviously move it to the fall. And that class is to benefit the seniors where we're going to work through them with the college application process, financial aid information, scholarship, all those things that seniors have come back to me and said they didn't know about when they went to college. So that class is certainly going well so far. And then the next level, we have CFM, which would be required for our Business Academy members. So CFM is currently being offered again after not being offered for a few years. We're breaking it up next year. We're proposing to CFM one, which would be a whole semester of careers. And then CFM two, which is currently now being taught as consumer finance. With that, we're looking to adopt the New York State standards for career and financial management for those classes. And then level three there, you'll see we have the entrepreneurship, accounting and advanced accounting, which have been offered for years. In that reddish level there, these are some new courses we're looking to add next year. We currently don't teach a computer class right now, but we're looking to reintroduce an advanced computer skills. Intro to Marketing, as Tiana mentioned, that would be a new course for us to be taught here at Iroquois. Sports and Entertainment Marketing would be sequential to Intro to Marketing. And then we're just changing the name of our law class from Business Law to Personal Law. And then below that, we are co-curricular. So there's two classes down there, the Advanced Financial Algebra, which is currently being taught by the math department. So that even though it's taught by the math department, would be offered credit within our academy as long, along with public speaking currently being taught with the LA. And then down below, obviously internship experience, as we all know, is invaluable to a student's experience when they leave Iroquois. So obviously we would push that and make that a requirement for the academy as well. Just one other quick thing too, I just wanted to mention on there, we had fifteen college credits available to students within that group of classes right there.
So we do have some requirements for admission into the Business Academy. After a student takes their first business course, whether that be Intro to Business, Career and Financial Management, whichever that might be, they're able to apply. We do ask for two teacher references just to be a part of that application. So overall applicants must have an eighty percent GPA and an eighty-five GPA, eighty-five percent GPA in their business courses. They'll, they will submit a letter of intent as part of their application, sort of like a cover letter explaining why they want to be a part of the Business Academy. And all those applications will be turned in after the first of the semester. They'll be accepted on a yearly basis and then all students will be notified by February fifteenth.
Just for a second, I want to talk about our advisory board. This is, this board is really kind of changing and constantly people that can participate in, in things that we do are added or taken out. But for the most part, the advisory board and the people in the community, the stakeholders are invaluable to our success. They come in and they do guest speaking. They are going to, we're going to be doing some mock interviews in a week and they are part of that process. They are judges for contests. They give us scholarship money. We do, they, obviously the big thing is taking our interns and networking on, on placing kids in, in different situations and networks and internships. And so they are just, you know, a wonderful group of people that we work with. And we are going to be meeting with them at least three times every year. And during those meetings, you know, the, the students are going to be able to benefit from just networking with them, learning how to converse with, with older people. Oh my gosh, they're scared to death to even get on the telephone and talk to somebody. So that's really important. It's an important skill for them to learn and these folks help us out all the way. So our advisory board invaluable.
And in conclusion, we know change happens. Sometimes we're ready for it. Sometimes we're not, as we've seen in the past year. But we want to make sure that here at Iroquois, our students are prepared and that they're at the front of that curve of change and that they are prepared for the outside world. And we want them to be the ones that are selected when they go on those interviews and when they go for those careers. So these are some future considerations that we have for the academy. One of them would be a Microsoft Office certification to go along with that advanced computer class. The next thing would be to look at New York State approved CTE pathways that we could offer to join the Student Organization of DECA, which is the largest business international organization. And then obviously always and continuously looking at our class offerings to ensure that we are staying on top of what is needed out there in the business environment. So that our kids again are graduating and ready to go out there and be successful. So with that, we appreciate your time. And if you have any questions, we would be happy to take any at this time.
I have one question. The, the courses that are eligible for the college credit, are those transferable to any college or is it a smaller group of colleges that'll accept those?
Yeah, they, it is transferable to any college. Right now, the articulation agreements that we have are with two colleges, ECC and Madai. Madai has been for, again, almost the entire time, twenty, twenty-five years. And I, I, the kids then would get a transcript from those colleges with a grade on it. And it's their responsibility to send it on to the college that they've been accepted to. The college then will decide at that point where it's going to sit on the transcript. There are some schools that will not take that college as that class on the transcript, but they are always accepted so far, always accepted as at least an elective. So it is one class, one less class that they have to take.
And right now we have a relationship with both SUNY Erie or ECC.
Right now we have a relationship, as Jim mentioned, with Madai College. And that goes back to the the longstanding relationship that's been there. We also have several classes that are through SUNY, SUNY Erie. And so those transfer especially well because of the SUNY relationship. But as Jim alluded, we've had a really positive track record with that and we're working with those two different schools.
Yeah, just, I can attest to that. My youngest son was a member of the academy and he was fortunate enough to get one of the internships and he's now a CPA with a big four accounting firm down in New York City. And to this day, he still keeps in touch with the individual who he did the internship. So it had a huge, huge impact on him. So, thank you.
Congratulations to your son, too.
I will second that. My son had the opportunity last year to be a senior with Mr. Whalen in the Business Academy and it benefited him enormously. As, although his, his internship was cut short last year. As of a year ago yesterday. crazily enough. But the financial math has helped him in his freshman year at his college and the financial algebra. And it's just a great program and thank you for moving it forward. It's great.
You know, really, I really enjoyed your presentation. Now maybe it was just because I haven't had one for, I don't know how long because of COVID. So, so yeah. But it was really great. It's exciting. One thing I liked, I liked really how you started, how you went into it with an idea, but you really found your vision, your passion for it. Cause really, I think that's what school is all about. Once you know where you want to go, it helps so much. And then you talked about purposeful change. And I think people have to realize that, that you have to have purpose for why you're changing and moving in a direction. And that was great. And then you talked about where access meets opportunity. And then you had internships. So you know, I really would like to get to where a point where every student before they graduate has an internship so they can maybe find their passion to bring it right back to the beginning. So thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you for bringing them in here and doing that, both of you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night.
If I could just add, I couldn't be more proud of this team's work. It was hard work and lots and lots of discussions. So I really thank them very much.
And as we move forward in the meeting, I would like to echo everybody else and congratulate you. It is exciting. And it's exciting to hear that amongst everything else going on this year, that, that forward thinking and, and moving ahead is really, you know, we can't, we can't be unpause. And so it's exciting to keep moving with this. So thank you for taking your time to continue in that direction. And these are really important skills. Talk about the, going to teach professionalism and being able to interact with the adults. I'd like to congratulate your student ambassador for showing us, wow. I, 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 we have, it's very, it can be very intimidating, very difficult to come in and present to a group of the school board that you don't know all of us, but you did an amazing job. And we wish you much success, which we can see that you will certainly have with the skills you already have. Thank you for coming and presenting to everybody. We really appreciate it. And with that, that will bring us to our super. with that, that will bring us to our superintendent's report.
You guys can always stay and listen to me. So the first thing on is instructional update. So for my instructional update, let me start where I left off. I really enjoy having a few people here today, too. So that's another great bonus. But for my instructional update, let me start where I left off at the, from the February meeting. So one thing I stated there was that Iroquois really believes in the in-person instruction and is constantly looking to find avenues to allow in-person instruction for everyone. There are three aspects that are really controlling us in doing this. The physical space with the buildings we have, the number of students, and the New York State policies and regulations that are in place. Of these three, it's really the six-foot rule of New York State that is the greatest obstacle. I mean, we have the set number of students, we have our set square footage, but when New York State put that six-foot out, it really created the obstacle. So Iroquois has, I said last month that Iroquois is bringing the K1 back, attending full-time through space modification, but that's really maxed out the primaries. You know, the lunchrooms are used for students with food allergies and some of the other buildings, the, what you have, they're used for other requirements that we have, so they're not available anymore. Students do travel to the gymnasiums and really one reason that we continue doing that is for the social emotional concerns. If a student or someone is locked in a room all day doing the, with the same confinement and it's small if you're doing physical activities in there, this allows them the opportunity to get out and move and move around. And I really want to applaud some of our physical education instructors because they've been able, I shouldn't say some, really all of them, because they've been able to get the students outside too during the winter, especially with the winter we've been having. So that's been great. So this leaves the question of how do we have more students return? That's, that's really what you hear in the news and anywhere and anyplace you go. The Erie County Commissioner, just the other night, the Erie County Commissioner of Health said it the best. Schools are overseen by the New York State Department of Health and the State Education Department. These organizations appear to be looking at the CDC and the CDC is reviewing the six-foot guidance as we speak. I mean, I heard that starting Monday and continuing through this whole week. And they're looking to do that based on data from all the reports I'm seeing are based on data. So I spoke with countless state officials, legislators about this. And my, really my request when I talk to them is exactly what the CDC is doing. Since these, since the New York State oversees us and gives us these parameters and regulations is have the appropriate professionals review the data, taking into account not only the physical, you know, with COVID and the spread of it, but the emotional concerns too, and provide an update on the guidance. And, and it appears that's what the CDC is doing currently. And until they announce their findings, unfortunately, we have to keep doing the best with what we have in the current framework. So in looking at that, I have been informed that the secondary level is making good progress with the pacing for their curriculum. Just seeing how are they moving along compared to other years. At the elementary level that we do, AIMS web testing is called, it's seeing how the student progress is going and why we use that is we can compare it to the national average. And the national average we use to compare it to was pre-COVID data because there isn't any COVID data. So it wasn't like, oh, we had a choice. But we listened, looked at the pre-COVID data and compared how we're doing during the COVID time. And for K through fourth grade, we are similar above what the national average was before COVID for the gains that our students are making. This is great because we're using the COVID instruction versus pre-COVID. Or that's what we're reviewing between the two. Also, the different methods of delivery, that we are, we are having similar results. So we're able to compare different buildings, different grade levels. And one thing with this environment, different families have different access, whether that daycare. And by comparing that, the teachers have to diversify their instruction, how it's delivered. And we're all having similar results in all the buildings. So that was great to see, too. So what's next? That, I mean, that's my logical question. What's next? Where, where can we go from here? It's great you're doing this, but we don't want to stay here. So what have we been doing to prepare? Because if the CDC comes out for guidance, I fully imagine New York State adopting it and then we can move right along with it. So over the past two months, administration has reevaluated classroom space. They've met with the teachers, the grade level leaders, the department chairs, the staff, and figured out what we would need to do with that change and how long it would take. So we, well, weeks ago, we ordered new desks because they found out some of the tables we have, if they changed the spacing from a six to a three foot, that we would need some more desks, the tables wouldn't work. So not only do we order them, the first set's been, actually, both sets have been delivered just before this meeting. I heard that the second set had come. So we're in good shape there. That's been received. Communicate with food service because there would be a change with them. Review the transportation. So I directly talked with Mr. Nagel over there in transportation. So they're set. Develop the transition timeline. How long will it take? Because if you go to any of the rooms, the furniture's different. If you go to the cafeterias, you can see that there's desks in there. We'd have to transition those. And from the principals, it's really about five days is what it would take to move everything back and get it organized, to reorganize the buildings. But the great thing for Iroquois, the way we've set it up, is in doing this, the students would remain with their current teachers. Other districts might have to be switching and reassigning students, but we'll be able to keep all the students with their current teachers. So where does this leave us? So if and when the CDC provides new guidance and New York State accepts it, Iroquois will be able to fully transition within five days. That's where we are up to this point. Now, we're not done. We're still going to be looking at things. Where can we refine it? Still meeting with teachers because every once in a while, some, some other nuance comes out that we might not be aware of. So with that, you know, I guess that's a point blank way of saying it, that we'll be able to transition once we get the change in guidance. Any questions from anyone in the board?
Doug, I just want it very clear that these plans that you discussed started two months ago, is what you just said, correct?
Yeah, 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 two months. Because we started looking in January when we were looking at the K1 and bringing it back in January. And over these two months, we were also looking at all the other grade levels. You know, my weekly meetings with the administration, we were asking questions and how would this look? How would this work? Anyone else?
And, sorry, another third one.
No, it's okay.
Every Friday, Doug, you send the Board of Education a memo and for the past two months, you have continued to keep the board updated on these discussions that you have been having, correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right.
Yeah, I have a question. I have a couple of questions, actually. Just again, to clarify, the CDC is reviewing the guidelines.
Yes.
And they will hopefully...
Well, let me say yes, because that's what I hear on the news. I haven't personally talked to the CDC, being a federal organization. But I think it's very clear to the whole country that they're reviewing them.
I mean, I think they're probably reviewing them on an almost daily basis and working with the data, right?
I would definitely hope so.
And this whole process, I mean, I know that you've been talking about, you know, we want kids back in school. That's the bottom line. Everybody wants kids back in school. And it was a challenge. As a matter of fact, this is really, it's kind of a little topic, but we actually have a recording of your phone call, Doug, from March 15th, saying that school would be canceled March 16th in 2020. And I mean...
That's one I never want to make again.
And your, your message was, it will be closed tomorrow. School will be closed tomorrow.
Yeah.
And that was it. And, and then, you know, of course, we all know what happened. And then all summer, you and the administrators, you and the principals worked diligently to come up with the, the required plan that had to be filed with the state in order for us to reopen at all in September.
Yeah, and that was, there were some challenges with that, too, because we kept waiting for guidance from the state and that didn't come until August 13th, 15. Don't quote me on the date, but it was middle of August.
Right. But you guys were prepared.
Yes. Yep.
And, and throughout that process, then, you keep revisiting anything that changes. We try and accommodate more students coming back, if at all possible, within the restrictions that are dictated from the New York State Department of Education and...
Yeah, because in September...
The Department of Health.
Yeah, I mean, I guess to review that, and I think I did this at one of the other meetings, in September, we were really reviewing what we did and bringing them back to make sure things were working smoothly. And there had, obviously, there had to be some modifications because we had never done it before. Then in September, October, we started looking at elementary level, because I think that was, that's where the greatest challenge was going to be for instruction with students. But very quickly in October, that turned into what happened in November, where we were back out. So we had to do that transition and then we came back in January and, and, you know, it's, the principals meet with me weekly to discuss these things.
And is there any, you know, now, these are the state guidelines to the district. And I think Dave mentioned in his board news we're sharing that districts have gone to their attorneys and said, hey, what if we go against what the state says? And have we done that?
Yeah, we've talked to them and what would happen. And always, Dave did very well in, in saying what the advice is and from insurance companies, both, he covered both of them about how they're advising you, you need to stay within the state mandates.
So our attorney advised that we have to stay within the state mandates. And the insurance company, what did they say?
They said the same thing. They said if, you know, if you did anything different, that would increase your risk exposure for whatever would happen.
Okay. So it really would be, we would, we, not we, the administrators and the administration have to keep the district's best interest first and foremost, and the students, right? So you just, we can't go against the state.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's been no case that I know of where a school went against the state during COVID. And I know there was one situation years ago where they did it and the state came in and said, this is what you have to do. These are requirements. Or here are the repercussions against the district about certifications, the removal of people and so on. That's, and I'm not saying that's a parallel case, but that's a, a similar one as I could come up with.
Yeah. And like, if there are other schools who are saying like, they brought all the kids back and, you know, we're five days a week and everybody's in school.
I've called around to all the different schools and talked to people. And I'm at superintendent meetings and we go, go over that. And there are a couple of schools who have, but they have very unique situations. Maybe a building they weren't using that they're able to reopen. They had lots of empty classrooms, which we don't have here because some people say, well, what about the, you know, we're the, the one wing and back up here on the main campus, that we moved the fourth grade down to the primaries, but that's completely being used. So we didn't have that luxury of those. But any school in our situation, I can't, I can't find one that is back and do anything different than we're doing.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just wanted to make sure I was...
It seems to, yeah, it seems to be something we always revisit at superintendent meetings. So they're not new questions to me, which makes it kind of easy to answer because we're always asking each other this.
Yeah.
And I think, I think it's amazing to see, too, because we've had the opportunity to be in different buildings. And I remember walking around the high school where rooms were measured and numbers outside doors with how many people can fit at certain levels. And, you know, that level of, of detail just shows everybody's commitment. I know we're all saying the same thing, but we all do want kids back in school five days a week. You know, we have space issues and we want to make sure that the guidance is keeping our students safe. And it's a challenge. I encourage people to keep, keep talking to their legislators.
Yeah. And, you know, I got to admit, those, those signs on the door in the high school that has like, you know, 15 students in this room, 10 in this room are kind of nice. When I went to do the three foot, because I could just walk around and double them. Because I do rely on the administrators, but also as I walk through the buildings and visit, I look at things, too, because otherwise, how can I ask them good questions? You know, and I think all the surveys I've seen coming back in our community, people want students back in school. They value the in-person instruction. The whole question is about safety and that's where the belief in safety seems to cause discussions amongst different individuals. But, you know, we looked at, or we're guided by or overseen, I guess overseen is the best word, by New York State. And that's the guidance that we have currently.
I wanted to make comment, if I had could, is I had talked to a few other people from different districts and we are very fortunate that we are getting those weekly updates with COVID numbers and how the school is doing and what's going on. It's really something as I have a student in the high school that I really look forward to all those things. It's really, really important to have that. And we're very fortunate. You'd be surprised at how many other people don't know what's going on. And I really tune into all those messages and I stop what I'm doing, no matter where I am, to get those updates, Doug. And I think they're fantastic. I think we're ahead of the crowd as far as the school districts go.
Yeah, thank you. And remember, you don't have to tune in right away. You can record them on your phone. You can, you know, use the playback function on it. So, so, you know, if you're driving, don't answer the phone if I'm calling, please. You can wait. The other aspect is that, you know, they're getting tough because in the past few weeks, there hasn't been a lot of change that's coming out from it. And I'm, I'm really trying hard to, if I hear something, relay it, but not be very repetitive. I don't, I don't want people to stop listening because it's like, yeah, he already said this. Yeah, he already said this. So I'm trying to find that balance. So I, so, you know, keep giving me feedback and I'll, I'll keep tweaking and, and trying to get them out the best I can to everyone. I think a few people are excited about the one with domestic travel, that you don't have to quarantine anymore, go back. There's probably a few cheers for that one with the spring break coming up. Anyone else?
A question just on, on the, the CDC and then the state's guidance on the, the difference of separation for our students in the music program. Are there no schools that are, are moving back to allowing, you know, concerts or students at a six-foot rule?
So actually, I think you're going right into my next one beautifully. So there, there's actually a resolution on here. So if the, the board could look at that, I'll start with that. And I will answer your question after I put it off for a second. And with this resolution, and I won't read it in its entirety, but just kind of, you know, go through it quickly. But it says, Board of Education of Iroquois recognizes affirm participation performing arts remains powerful education experience for the district students. Benefits of such participation include but not limited to students are less likely to experience mental illness, less likely to experience the type of a mental isolation that contributes to depression, anxiety and self-harming behaviors. Most recent random COVID testing at the district, so this was what we were doing during January, resulted in minimal positive infection rate. We had one. To date, the Erie County Department of Health has not identified any in-school transmission of COVID within the performing arts program. So be very careful with that wording because they have identified some very, very small numbers of in-school transmission, but this is in-school transmission within the performing arts. Okay? Very specific. So whereas the New York State School Boards, along with school district partners and government and in public health, have placed high priority on the safety of our students and the staff since the onset of the pandemic, but also desire to achieve an appropriate balance of such safety considerations for substantial student health and welfare benefits of student participation in diverse activities. Now therefore, the Iroquois Board of Education supports the New York State review of the mandated requirements for performing arts based on the current science and data for social distancing requirements. Within this, that, you know, we, we need, it wasn't stated with a number in here, but you said it very well about the 12-foot. This is about in performing arts, they have to remain 12-foot apart, even though I played the saxophone, so I'll use that. There was a cover on the saxophone, you know, a sock on it, like you wear a mask to stop the transmission of going through. And, and so with all this, the rumors at me, there were some emails from the department chair that I received, I think the whole board received. And, and it was really about, and then I went over and talked to the department chair and he said, well, I think this school is doing it or that school is doing it. So I called the schools, he mentioned it. And, and one person alluded that they might be going there, but they have not gone there to my knowledge in following up with them. So I don't know of any school that has. Now, I didn't do a huge blaken of all the schools in Western New York. It was just the key ones that, that I was told were looking to go that way. And I don't know of one that has yet. So maybe there is, I just, I don't know of it yet.
My, my nephew is a music teacher in high school in East Central New York. And they observe the, the 12-foot. When they do concerts, they are able to bring a number of students together, but the rest are virtual. So they're, you know, still doing that mixing, you know, thing. He's got... thing. He's gotten pretty savvy with that. But you know, just tackle the, the rest of the board members that spoke. I think, you know, we're all very frustrated, you know, by what's going on. We, we do recognize the fact that we need to get our kids back in school. In the same token, you know, we've got to follow the existing guidelines. Part of, one of the items that makes that frustrating for me is the different applications depending on, you know, what sector you're talking about, even within our schools. We have a six-foot rule within the classroom. We have a 12-foot rule for our music department and performing arts, and then we're allowing sports. So you know, i- it's that practical application to me that, that is just so inconsistent. We need to be consistent. And, and I do know just from the articles that I've been reading, they do have quite a bit of data regarding the three-foot distance that the CDC is reviewing right now. And my understanding from everything that I read is there's virtually no difference, you know, in, in any infection rate or effectiveness between a six-foot distance and a three-foot distance. But we need to wait for the CDC to come out with that guidance and then New York State in turn normally follows CDC. And as soon as that happens, I hope, you know, within that five-day period, you know, we can adjust and, and get our kids back, you know, into the classroom. But you know, again, I think it's that, that inconsistencies that we all see, you know, in, in applying distances and varying distances that I find very frustrating. And a lot of times you have to start scratching your head. Well, you know, who do you believe? You're telling me here, if I'm blowing through a wind instrument, I need to be 12 feet from someone, but yet I can guard someone in basketball and be right up in their face. And you know, there's no consequence to that. So that's something they really have to look at. And I hope that's something, Dave, that's being brought out with our legislators is to get these policies consistent across the board. Because it is creating a lot of angst for a lot of people, a lot of parents, and especially for our students.
And I, and I think, I, you gave me three things to mention. I think Dave in his report said there was one legislator that either was introducing or thinking of introducing legislation for a smaller distance overall for school. So I hope they're clear and include the different categories, I'll call them.
Yeah, I can. I mean, we want our decisions to be based on data and not just arbitrarily make up, you know, a number. But you know, if the data that they have does prove that out, you know, let's get that turned around as soon as possible.
Then the, the other piece is, I think, like you said, you've been reading all these reports. So if, if we can go online and read these reports and these are the professionals, why is it taking them longer to read the report? So I think that's a, I think that causes a lot of frustration for a lot of people. I'll, I'll leave it at that. And then like you said, getting back in five days, the only caveat I'd put on that because it's middle of March. If we get too close to spring break and it ends up being seven days before spring break, I might just start right after break just for logical, you know, why bring everyone back for one day or two days? So I want to think no matter what, it's five days. We have to be logical in our decisions depending on when we hear from the CDC.
I mean, obviously the data that they have, you know, as far as three-foot distancing in schools is coming from other states, you know, that have shown.
I think New England states, they have some, I want to say Connecticut.
Yeah, and there's some Midwest and, and Western states that have also, you know, either left it up to the individual school districts or the individual health departments. And it's not a, you know, statewide, you know, mandate like we have in New York.
I know, I know we have a, a resolution that we're, we're looking at voting on this evening to ask the state to, to look at this closer. Have you talked with other superintendents and, and are there other districts that are doing similar things? Is the state going to listen to our resolution? I guess is my question.
That's a tough, the second, second part's a tough one. Is the state going to listen to us? Because I know when we talked to a lot of legislators, they are listening, they're very attentive. And I'm not saying that, that they're, they're being insincere because I really think they are, especially, you know, one of them looks like to be introducing some legislation. So they're being very sincere. As a state, as a collective, how will that go through with the different ways the state takes care of business? That's, that's a good question. Will the state listen? I know representatives are listening, but will there be enough representatives from different parts of it? And I know that different superintendents feel the same way. I, you know, we, I put this together, you know, and obviously I review it with the president and vice president. So they, they greatly helped in editing it along with Cindy. So therefore, this is one that we put together, which I will share with other superintendents and I talk about at my meetings. This is what we're doing at Iroquois and I would think they would follow suit based on what they're saying, but I'm not going to speak for another district ever.
I, I would say that we have had some incredible success with resolutions. We, you know, we've started, we, I'm in Gunner, started the unified sports resolution. And you know, now our unified athletes can play after, you know, they, until they're 21, which is when they're entitled to stay in the high school. So I think that this resolution could be really, really powerful. And like we, Iroquois led the way with the unified sports resolution. We're leading the way with this resolution for music. And I think we should be really proud of that. So.
You know, we did have a Erie County Association of School Boards Executive Board meeting the other night. And we normally do a roundtable at the end of the, at meeting, let everybody catch up on what's, what's going on in particular districts. And I know a few of the districts that, that were represented there, they had stated that they had passed resolutions regarding that 12-foot rule. And I think at least one of them had urged the three-foot separation for all students.
Yeah.
So it is, it is, you know, getting out there. You know, Dave, I don't know if that's something that we could maybe send out from the Erie County Association of School Boards, a template for a resolution for our local school boards.
Yeah, I can take what we have and send it out.
Anything else? Okay. Well, that was performing, New York State testing. Let me just move a couple of these. So, New York State testing. So New York State Regions is still hoping that the federal government will accept its waiver for the requirements of testing. So with the ESSA, did I get that right? With ESSA, the, the New York State requires certain data coming to them to, in order for New York State to get funding, in fact, for all the states to get funding. And so there are certain exams that we have to administer because of that. So New York State put a waiver in, the federal government said, no, we're, we're not giving any waivers, but they're still in the review process because that's 90 days? 120?
120 days.
120 days. This is, this is my right hand. See, it's right on the right side. But so with that, if they can't get the waiver through, New York State has already come out, or the regions have said, this is how we're going to administer those exams. The three through eight is typically a two-session exam. They only have one session of that. And for the regions exams, there'll only be four regions exams that will be given. ELA, which would be June 17th, Algebra I, which would be June 23rd, Earth Science, June 24th, and Living Environment, June 22nd. Those are the only four that would be given. So it's not definite yet. New York State is still hoping for these, for 100% exemption. I know Dr. Dudik just filled out a whole form of what we're doing locally, how we're providing parents with information, like with our portals and reports to the board, like I did with the Ames Web today about student progress. And I think what they're going to try to do is impress upon the federal government of what local schools are doing so that information is out and people know how their children are doing. I know at here Iroquois, if a parent ever really does want to know what their child is doing, they can call the teacher or email the teacher and they always get back and provide that information.
Could I also add that the fourth and eighth grade science assessments would be part one only?
Yes. Yep. Perfect. Thank you. Any questions with that? So again, we're sitting and waiting. Go ahead. Yes.
This is for Mary Jo. Did the, did I see or am I incorrect that the Board of Regions just voted about only part one and part of the math and the ELA also?
In the three through eight? That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a big change for people.
And what they're, what they're asking schools to do is to use the entire testing window that would allow students in different cohorts to participate.
Any other questions? Moving on to capital projects. So to let everyone know that the blueprints have been submitted to the state education department. So they're in for their review. Now it's a matter of waiting. You get in the queue and you wait your turn and then they review it. It takes a few months minimumly to get through that. In getting prepared for this, the architects met with the science departments, the science teachers themselves, all of them for their classrooms to help get the designs with that and the athletic coaches for the, the field we're looking to put in across the road. And this was all done before the review went in. And, and you know, all of these people were very pleased and impressed with what they saw as the final product. And they really were thankful for our architect for really listening to him over the meetings and making modifications and changes. There's still things that we're going to be looking at and doing that didn't, weren't part of the blueprints that have to go in, like the, like the type of turf or maybe the colors of some cabinetry. So there will still be meetings going on. And these also expand onto the principals for some of the other works that are going on in the buildings.
During, during our ECASDA Executive Board, when we were doing the roundtable, there was one of the board members that had indicated they just had completed their capital project for about $40 million. And the costs came in a lot less due to the pandemic. And so they were able to get another $2 million worth of projects into the capital project.
Yep. And I know during one of our capital projects meeting with the board, they had three different things that they were looking at. So I reminded our construction manager of those, that fact to make sure they still have that recorded. So as we find out from bidding, we can be looking at those aspects. Any other questions?
Is the state review process still typically the same amount of time? Or has COVID affected that and made it longer?
Actually, COVID has affected to make it a little shorter. So, so, so we're really hoping to have it back by, I'll, I'll say early fall so we could do our bidding late fall, which then maybe even we can start doing some work outside site work, late fall or very early spring. So that's, that's what we're looking at right now with the timeline. Any questions?
Was that, sorry, wasn't there like a fast track in the approval process that we were supposed to be doing?
Yeah, we looked at the fast track. The fast track is actually taking as long or longer than going directly to SED. So I'm, I'm sorry, you're right. I didn't review that with the board. So yeah, that's why we did not go with that.
Okay.
Longer fast track. I'll word it that way. Yeah. And we also save money by not going through that. So I'm sure everyone's so delayed with me talking so much, but I'll turn it over to John now. So you hear a different voice for a while for the 21, 22 budget development.
Thank you. Back in February, we presented the first look at our budget and it was, represented a 2.27% increase in spending and had a 1.96% increase in the tax levy, which is our allowable cap increase that based primarily on CPI. And then we had at the end of that, a 1.2 million dollar budget gap, which was the difference between expenses and expected revenues for next year. And a lot of that was driven by state aid being fairly flat and in some cases going down in some of our aid categories. So since then, we were going to update you and let you know if there's any changes in the state aid. At this point, as Mr. Lowery said very, very well, he summarized a lot of those proposals that are, have been done by the state senate and assembly. It's great that they're both on the same page with a lot of those because sometimes some years they're not on the same page with what they want to do with increasing the budget. Both, both proposals increased statewide school aid above the executive budget proposals. Both look at increasing foundation aid, which is the largest component of, of state aid to all school districts in New York State. And that foundation aid has been fairly flat or very slightly above flat for the last probably four or five years. So that's great to hear that they want to do something with that and start to put some meaningful increases in foundation aid. We hope that happens. At the federal level, there's been a lot of news, obviously in the last couple of weeks where the, the 1.9 trillion dollar American Rescue Plan was signed into law. And part of that was to allocate $123 billion towards K-12 education throughout the country. This will increase a category that they, or a funding plan that they call ESSER. And ESSER is an acronym for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. But there seems to be, there's going to be a lot of catches to that. There's, there's a lot of money in that that will be distributed to the states and then the governors of those states can distribute that to their districts the way they want. But there are a lot of catches and you have to appropriate some of that money towards bringing students that are behind due to the pandemic. So we have to look at what that'll, the impact will be on our district and what services, additional service we may, we may have to provide. And this money, we hope is not replacing state aid money, but hopefully it's above and beyond state aid money. So because we need to address these things with our students. And the, remind everybody, the state constitution, state constitution mandates that a budget should be approved by the state by April 1st. And that's only two weeks away. So we expect a lot of news to come, come through in the coming weeks.
You know, John, quick question. As far as the additional rescue aid funding comes along, what do you think the real chances are that that would be in addition rather than, you know, as we've seen with all of the other aid that's come, you know, because of the pandemic, you know, our way, the state has offset that by reducing the amount of aid that they would normally give us. So the net effect is, is zero.
Yes. And I think both the Senate and Assembly proposals reject that what the governor called local district funding adjustment, which is the negative adjustment. Their proposals proposed to stop that and not have that happen. So we're hopeful, don't know.
Yeah, I think the federal government really made an effort to prevent that from happening. We haven't seen official documents yet from the state or the federal government. But it really seems what we're hearing through different means is that how they're going to allocate it, how it's going to be given, the parameters around it are hopefully going to work much better than it did for previous funds from this, from the federal government.
Well, the thing that has me concerned, besides New York State now being, I think it's up to $15 billion in debt. We were at $6 billion in debt prior to the pandemic hitting. Prior to that, we were, we had a $2 billion deficit and the state took that, those funds from school districts in order to cover that $2 billion over a course of a number of years through the gap elimination adjustment. I'm just afraid that, you know, we're, we could possibly see the same thing happen. And, and I think we saw a little bit of that with the way they're handling the star reimbursement. You know, there's a slight difference there, not in our favor, not in, you know, I'm sure any school district's favor, you know. So, you know, little things like that. And, and huge with, with getting those, you know, having those expenses or the reimbursements unbundled because I think we would end up over the course of, you know, a couple of years, end up losing an awful lot of funding through that.
Yeah. And I think, you know, John, John and I had lots of talks about this and we're continuing to talk about it, where if we get this money from the federal government, I really, I can't imagine the federal government doing it again. And you look at this money in the years that they say it could be spread over. Do you remember?
I think they're looking from it until September of 2022, 2022?
23.
23, I'm sorry. Yeah. So you have a couple of years almost maybe to use this. And if you spread, you can spread it out and maybe smooth things a little better.
So as a district and how we approach finances, it's not, oh, we got it all this year, spend it. It's let's plan this out because, and if the state's spending money this year, and then next year we, we could hit something. So John, I've already had those talks. And John brought up another piece in there, I think, you know, we should be clear to the board about it and the public because they're listening, is that he talked about how some of this money would be allocated to help students that were falling behind. In my meetings with principals, we've already been talking about what we can do, what we can do with reassigning teachers, what would be the staffing need, what are the enrollments, or where would there be people available to do it? Which is one reason why some clarification, because if you're looking at anything over the summer or next year, and these funds have to be allocated, we want to make sure we're lining everything up. to be allocated, we want to make sure we're lining everything up. But we've already been, ooh, December, I think we started talking about it. I looked at John, not Mary Jo for this because they were doing budget discussions, which he was at, but it was driven by Mary Jo because it's instruction. So, you know, got to look both ways.
You know what? And I, and I think with the one house budgets where both the assembly and the senate are saying no federal money needs to go to schools, I think we have a better chance of that happening and the governor does not. Trying to stick his hand in the cookie jar, he's already got a couple of issues that he's dealing with right now. I don't know how that will look, you know, if he decides, well, I'm going to take the federal money and I'm going to use it, you know, for something else. I think that might be, you know, the last thing that he will probably be doing.
Yeah, and I think.
Sorry, I was just going to say that Senator Gallatin also said that New York State was hoping for something like $6 billion and they're getting 23 and 12 of that is going for schools. So, and that's just to the state. There are other funds in the American Rescue Plan that are, like not all of New York State's money goes directly to the state. Some is being allocated to the county level and even to the school district level so that the governor won't be able to get his hands on it. So I think that's pretty amazing. I, you know, I think that in the CARES Act, the federal government saw funds going directly to the states and then being gobbled up by the state and not going to where it was supposed to. And there were some cautionary limits put on the, the money that's being distributed now. So, you know, fingers crossed that that is the case and it, but it definitely seems like the governor won't have as much power over the money as previously.
You said exactly what I was going to say. So what I'll just add is, you know, be sure people to thank your federal representatives for recognizing what was happening in New York State and really looking to do what they could do to mitigate that aspect. All right, anything else?
Go to CARES Act?
CARES Act, yep. CARES Act, so this was one of the previous funds coming.
Yeah, the CARES Act was a small version of a federal stimulus money that came this year and, and it didn't really go well the way they executed it and, and put it out and allowed districts to actually had to apply for it and go through a long process. I touched on that in the February meeting. That presentation is still on our website if anybody wants to look at it. At that time, we had applied for the money. Every district in New York State had to apply for their share of that money. And we just found out, I just wanted to update the board by saying we, we found out about a week ago that our proposal and our plan was approved and we did see the first amount of money arrive finally. And unfortunately, we're nine months into the year right now. CARES money, CARES Act is an acronym, stands for Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security. It directly replaced state aid. This was where he took away state aid and said, here's the CARES money is going to replace that from the federal government. But you have to apply for, share a small amount with private schools that are eligible. So we had to actually take some of that money, we lost a little bit that way. But we did, just to let the board know that our, our plan was approved and we did, we are starting to see that money come through into the district right now.
Questions? All right. Just what I saw on the phone there a second ago, this really has nothing to do with schools, but it seems like for your personal tax returns, that the date has been moved to sometime in May. I was just told that, so I don't like people thinking I'm doing other business up here. So I just be clear what, what I was told, I'll announce that to everyone. So if you're not done with your taxes, you have a few more minutes or days. So the last thing I have is really quick, congratulations to the following winter sports teams. And I believe this is winter one, not winter two or fall two or whatever different sports seasons we have. But these are the student athletes, I always love announcing these because the boys varsity bowling, they were over 97, girls varsity bowling was over 95, coed varsity rifle was over 93 and boys varsity swimming was over 95. So during this environment, being an athlete and having these grades, excellent. And with that, I think I turn it right back to you, Sharon, for recognition of guests.
All right, so. Can I interrupt? I'm so sorry, Sharon. It's okay. One quick question. I am wondering about the lunches and breakfasts. Those are still being offered?
Yes, I just looked at John.
Throughout this year?
Throughout this whole year, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
And we will, and we will be over spring break, we will be doing the same thing we did over February break with a couple pickups where people could come and get them.
Information's on the website right now.
And sorry, on the website. You can say it. I know. All right, Sharon, right back to you.
You sure?
I don't know.
I'm just kidding. All right. So we're going to be moving on to recognition of guests regarding agenda items only. And I believe we have Karen Durkin, who would like to speak to the board.
And you might have to turn the mic back on, they turn off automatically.
Okay, hello.
Is that, is that on you guys?
It's on, I think. Can you hear me? I'm a quiet talker. Sorry, guys. I just wanted to take a moment to say good evening, Mr. Schofield and the members of the Board of Education. And I would just want to take the opportunity to thank all of you for everything that you have done during this, this time. I know it's been very, very trying for all of you and the success that you have deemed for all of our students in keeping the students and faculty safe during this entire COVID situation has been tremendous. And once again, thank you, kudos to all of you for a great job. My name is Karen Durkin. I'm a parent and a current, a current student at Iroquois as well as a graduate. I'm also an active volunteer within the district and the music booster president. As we continue to embark on the continuation of the COVID cycle in this ever-changing, surreal reality, it has become apparent that we truly don't know what will come next in this series for the fine faculty administration and students of Iroquois. As this piece of history continues to unfold, it will truly be a time for our students to have that conversation with the future generations as our parents and respective elders in our family units have had with us. The infamous line of when I was a young kid, we had, dot, 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 insert collective memory. What will the story that our students and faculty be able to tell as new chapters unfold? Stories of a virus that came in at a midpoint of a school year that made time stop for a moment and we had to learn how to adapt through a variety of mediums and sacrifice much of what we constitute as our daily normal. As chapters unfolded, we learned to bring back some of our routines utilizing safety measures that led us to the constant reminders of temperature checks, mask wearing and social distancing. Gradually, students, faculty, coaches and advisors were granted with additional opportunities slowly made available, some in a semi-traditional sense and others in a new sense of normal. As the year continued to unfold, there were signs of some relief and excitement among the student body, the possibility of additional normalcy on the horizon of the opening of the new fall/winter athletic season under certain restrictions and guidelines. Certainly with this occurring, this would also be the sign of additional opportunities for the remainder of the student body to unfold and modifications to the recommended social distancing practices, six foot for students while using masks and shields and 12 foot for musicians using masks and instrument masks for safety. It did not. As we fast forward, once again, the students of Iroquois were rejoiced with the hopes of possibility that maybe the end of their school year would pick up from where the end of the normal school year left off last year as the announcement of the spring sports were made. Teams would be able to reunite unity, traveling together as a cohesive unit, playing indoors at home in other schools, demonstrating the schools, the skills that they worked so hard to accomplish in practices, not always having to utilize the mask or adhere to any distancing rules that apply to every other student within our district. Gradually, the opportunity to be able to have limited spectators, all truly wonderful and encouraging signs. Surely this would be the sign of eased restrictions for other clubs. The 12-foot distancing rule would be reduced and once again, performances with limited, safely spaced audiences would be allowed to resume. The answer to the last part is no. While it was very encouraging and joyous that there is a semi-sense of business as usual for the students within the athletic department, while the remainder of the students are masked, six foot separated and 12 foot while masked for musicians and still no live performances because there is no way to do so, do so at 12 feet. No performances and no live audiences and 12-foot rehearsals. The discouragement and morale of the students within the music department because of this is down. Frustration is ensuing as this for many of these students is their release, enjoyment and a way to channel their creative energy into teamwork, coming together to present their big game, their performances. The questions continue to arise among the students. How can students be, be without masks on top of each other, traveling to different schools and have an audience, I apologize, while we are separated by not three feet, not six feet, but 12 feet and are fully masked? I look to you, the superintendent and the school board, to look at the percentage double standard within the variations of student curricula and extracurriculars and note the apparent academic and, oh, I apologize, and approached you to revisit the current district's distancing guidelines within the music department is the, in the best interest of the students. We are fully aware of the COVID regulations within New York State and we greatly appreciate you presenting the referendum. This would accommodate a greater cohesive musical learning environment, purpose for accomplishment and lift social and emotional well-being. This would also grant the ability to safely allow limited performances so the students within the music department may continue this chapter of the series on a high note. On behalf of the students in the Iroquois Music Department, I thank you for all of your time and careful consideration regarding this matter.
Thank you, Karen. I don't believe there's any other.
Yes, Cindy did receive some few to read. She did receive four on one topic though, and because of the board policy, we would have to allow, we'd have to waive the only three on one topic to allow four red on one topic.
Need to vote on that?
Uh, no, just if everyone nods their head yes, we'll be good and go ahead. That's what we've always done. All right, all yes, Cindy. All yours.
Okay, see emails from, I mean, I apologize if I say these names wrong, Amanda Stelmick. For the longest time, I felt the parents were left in the dark on several things going on in the school when COVID started. I even expressed this to Mrs. Rachel Walker, first grade teacher in Marilla Primary when school started. Again, we have no idea what the school is doing, planning to get the kids back in school. One, why aren't our children in school five days a week? I'm lucky, my first grader is in five days a week. I need to know now what's going to happen when she starts second grade in September. Two, what's holding Iroquois Central from bringing the kids back to school full time? I don't want to hear you're listening to Doc, excuse me, Dr. Fauci. Schools in other states have been going full time. They've been going against what Dr. Fauci recommended and their rate seems to be close to New York State or possibly higher. There is no excuse why we can't. We need to take upon ourselves to do what's right for the kids. Three, could the school sue the state like restaurants and gyms did? If restaurants and gyms won against the governor, why can't the schools do this? Four, why hasn't the board thought of using the gym, cafeteria and auditoriums when we start utilizing this extra space for teaching? The next email is from Jennifer Laslovich. One, what is the criteria to get children back in school full time? Is it strictly reducing six feet to three feet distancing? Is it, is it positivity rate in the community? Is it updating ventilation and airflow? The district has now had over a year to fix any of these issues, if indeed an issue. Is it getting all teachers and staff who want a vaccination vaccinated? If this, then what percentage of our teachers and staff have been vaccinated? What percentage need to be vaccinated? Is it getting all students vaccinated? We need transparency regarding this because if this truly is a criteria, then we will not be seeing children in school full time until maybe next year. Is it, we are strictly waiting on the blessing of the county or state or both? If so, exactly what are you waiting to hear about from them? Whatever it is, the decision-making process needs to be written down so it can be discussed. We are being strung along with these open-ended decisions that have no plan and our kids are suffering permanent long-term damage, whether it be reduced education, loss of social skills, hurt at home relationships or emotional stress. I personally feel like because the majority of parents have been going along with Iroquois decisions and for the most part have not been very vocal, the district has taken advantage of this and keeping quiet, not involving us. It appears that sports, which believe me, I'm happy that the kids especially, the older ones have something to look forward to, continues to take precedence over education at this district. This is irresponsible and reprehensible, especially for K through 4 graders who are generally not even in sports. Has the district reached out to parents regarding their feelings on sending kids back full time? Do we have a number, percentage of how many are comfortable and want to and how many are okay with remaining as is until the end of the year? This should be very helpful in the reopening conversation because it will give the district an idea if perhaps three to six feet is very achievable, since not all will be coming back back extra space in the class. Any discussions taking place regarding our summer school program for those who have fallen behind due to the hybrid model? Besides my questions, I have a final thought regarding the status of hybrid learning. Two to three days a week, my third grader is sitting in her bedroom doing schoolwork from a to-do list. She has one team meeting every morning at nine that generally lasts a half hour. After she's done with that, she mostly does the math and reading exercises using the online apps. She then does the hard copy work. Generally, she is done with schoolwork by noon, she eats lunch and basically has no motivation to really do anything else the rest of the day but wait for her little brother who is in first grade, so goes full time. We find miscellaneous things for her to do like more reading and going back to her online math and doing more. Can the district honestly say that this sounds like an adequate education for a third grader? If yes, then that makes me very sad for the future of my kids' public school education. From Laura Monheim. Dear Mr. Schofield in the Iroquois Central School Board of Education, as a mom of two students at Wales Primary, I would like to submit a few questions and concerns to the Board of Education regarding the possibility of getting our students back to in-person learning, full days, five days a week. I am hoping this email suffices as written request to be read aloud for tonight's board meeting. My first question is, what steps are being taken to consider decreasing the physical distancing requirements from six feet separation to three feet separation? Recent scientific articles have shown us there is no statistical difference in safety and no increased risk of virus transmission when decreasing from six to three feet. If this is true and is just as safe to be three feet apart, it is a six feet. Have we gone the process of measuring classrooms and available, available teaching space in schools to determine if three feet spacing would allow adequate space for all students to return? To reach, I'm sorry, to return full time instead of the current hybrid model, it is them attending only 50% of the time. It has been stated that you are waiting for the CDC to make an official decision about decreasing the distance recommendations, but have we even started the process of determining if three feet separation would allow them all to return? If the spacing would allow for full return, will parents be allowed to choose between full-time attendance and all virtual for families that still want all virtual? Also, what steps are being taken to discuss this pressing matter with the CDC or the powers that be to make it clear that many families in Iroquois want their students back in person, full days, five days a week? Can we make it now, can we make it known that, sorry, can we make it now that want them to expedite their decision process and not delay? My next area of concern is about determining what Iroquois families and what Iroquois teachers really want. Some on virtual, some on hybrid, some on full-time in person. Parents have been given the option to keep their students home 100% of the time for all virtual learning, if that's what they felt was safest and in the child's best interest, or the hybrid option. Some parents have chosen all virtual option and that is their decision to make. What about the parents that now feel it would be safe for their students to attend five days a week? Parents that feel full day in-person attendance is in the best interest of their child. Why can't we have the option to choose what we feel is safe and in the best interest of our children and have our students return full time? The surveys that have been distributed to the parents determine what Iroquois families really want have failed to include all the options. They give us two or three options of different hybrid models or all virtual to choose between, but none of the options have been referred, have been returned full time. I would be interested to see a survey go out to Iroquois parents that asks to rate in order of preference the following options. Return five days a week, masks on, three feet apart, remain hybrid at current model, go 100% virtual. Also, with regards to surveys, can we have the data on how many replies were sent in compared to the number of Iroquois families and what percentage chose which option? Also, a survey to the teachers to determine how many want to remain with the hybrid model versus return full time, which sheds some light on what the teachers really want. Transparency in the numbers of how many teachers respond versus did not respond and how many teachers chose each option would be helpful. Thank you for considering my questions and concerns. Next one is from Don Burke. Catholic and private schools utilize their cafeteria and gym, something we should have done since the first day of school. What is the Board of Education doing to ensure children come back to school ASAP? And that's the last one on that. And that's the last one on that topic.
Thank you. And as always, we thank everybody for sharing your thoughts and concerns with the board.
Uh, the next topic, again from Amanda Stelmick. I would like this question asked to the board members. I'm sure many more parents are wondering the same thing. What makes general neutral bathrooms a more important topic than bringing our children back to school full-time topic? And then the next, another one from Amanda Stelmick. Is there a need for general neutral bathrooms? Is there someone that identifies themselves as the opposite sex in the school districts? We don't need, we don't need to say who. The reason I ask is to see why this topic is being brought up and if there's a need for this bathroom. What schools are you thinking of putting general neutral bathrooms at? Do you believe having this gender-neutral bathroom could cause problems? For example, boys and girls going in together? What would this bathroom look like? Will this bathroom be monitored so that it's being used for the purposes it's intended to be? My concern is that if someone identifies themselves or has started to make the transition to the opposite sex, will they be bullied by other students because they see them using this gender-neutral bathroom? I'm looking out for the wealth, well-being of the child. What will the cost, what will this cost the school? Still not happy that this topic is being brought up at the board meeting tomorrow. I don't think this is an important topic, especially with students in school only two to three days a week currently. This bathroom isn't a current need in the environment we are living in at this point. If this topic was brought up after the kids were in school full-time, I believe you won't see so many pissed-off parents. Probably many parents would support for the right reason if this was brought up at a different time. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we will open up a discussion on agenda items 11.2 through 11.5.17.
I wanted to say congratulations to Anne Marie and her retirement and will miss her.
Yeah, I spent some time talking to her when she turned it in and it sounds like she has some great plans to do with some. Very, very glad that she's taken this opportunity, but she's going to be greatly missed.
Mm-hmm.
I concur.
As always, we're very thankful for the donations.
Mm-hmm. It's super exciting to see drama club starting in the high school. I know the middle school, um, had a head start, but the, the high school is meeting and that's awesome. And, um, rifle starting, so that's pretty cool.
And also a special thank you to the vote inspectors for May, especially in this environment. They did a great job. And October, I think, was the last time that they were in. And, uh, so thank you for coming in again in May. There's all volunteer position, so huge thank you. There, there'll also be an addition to the agenda when you get to that, just since this is the discussion part because, and John can jump in if he wants, there were some bid, a bid that came in higher for the $100,000.
So item, item 11.515, um, we put out the capital A project for bid. The way we had that bid structured, we had quite a bit of work on there and the bids came in higher than, um, we needed because that's a $100,000 project. We can't go above that. Um, so that, that motion is to reject all those bids. And then the amendment, the yellow piece of paper that you have, um, we actually had a bid opening today because we, we redid the project to scope, uh, and we put that out to bid again. Uh, today at two o'clock, those bids were open and we, uh, have the award here for the, the low bidder, which is now within the budget of the project.
And, and to be very, very clear with this, this is $100,000 that we do every single year. It's in the general fund. It has absolutely nothing to do with the large capital project that was just submitted to SED. Two completely different aspects. One is an annual thing that we do every year just to take care of little maintenance and the other is a, a large project that has nothing to do with what we just talked about.
Well, just, just a couple of questions. The scope of the project, John, how, uh, how much did we have to shrink that?
We had, we broke it into, we had a very large amount in one, one package. We broke those into small, three smaller packages so that we could see how much we could do, get the most work done, uh, for the dollars. Uh, so this is a, doing approximately, two of the large rooms at Marilla, um, the ones we're having a lot of issues with, with water coming in the windows and a lot of damage to those windows. Um, so we're getting two, uh, of the three, we're hoping to get, we're getting two of the rooms done with windows.
Hopefully, um, I know I was talking with a board member from Sweet Home and they've got a, a capital project going on and they were surprised at how low the bids came in. So they were actually able to, you know, naturally we're talking a lot more money here, but, uh, they were able to really increase the scope of their, their capital project. I know it's a little bit harder to do when you're doing small projects because, you know, you don't have that bounty scale, but...
Yeah, I, I think it, you know, typically we do come in under. I think we were a little too aggressive of what we were trying to get done, hearing that a lot of them were coming in under. And also with windows and glass, um, anyone's trying to replace a window in their house kind of knows what's happened with that. So between those two factors and not having a full scope of where one aspect might go up and the other down, um, you know, unfortunately, we've never had to do this before, but we still had the opportunity and we could still be on time to get it done in the summer and it's, it's the, the one who won the bid is one we have experience with and it does some very good work. Agreed.
Can you talk a little bit about the policies? We're, um, going to be adopting certain policies. There are some for our first reading policy. I know we subscribe to Erie One Boses's policy services. Like, how do we, like, do we determine which policies are going to be adopted at different meetings or how is that all determined? Can you, um, run a little bit of information on that, please?
Uh, so for the policies that, for the, it's always for the first reading because once you start the first reading, they just follow for the next three board meetings. We get an update and then all the ones on our update are reviewed to be put on the board as soon as possible. So there might be one with technology that technology has to review, um, for how they're doing something, so we might send it to them. So it might be a month after we get it, but typically we try to get them on within the first month or two after receiving them. Would that sound correct, Cindy? Yep, she agrees. Just because she, she receives them and then brings them into my office and we review them and then get them out to who has to communicate.
So the policies that are coming out are not recommended necessarily by the district? They are recommended because laws change?
Absolutely correct.
And as a, as an example, could you, could you just touch on the 11.5.2? Some of the policies in there. Can you clarify those for people just so they have an idea?
Yeah, the, the nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy in the district, that just has to do with some terminology and wording of, of how it's, of how different individ, how you address and talk about different individuals to make sure all classes are protected. And the other one for gender-neutral bathrooms, that has to do with educational law and public buildings law, that what you have to take are single occupancy bathrooms, so only one person would go in. I would personally call them family bathrooms, so one person goes in, shuts the door, locks it. Um, so all of our multi-use bathrooms aren't that way. You can't lock the door, even the one I use in the hall, there's two receptacles and those are just going to be labeled bathroom. And that way, one person can go in there and use it and, and, and that's, although that's taken care of.
So those came about because of laws and they're reviewed by Erie One Boses, who has a, um, number of attorneys that work directly for Erie One Boses that, working in conjunction with New York State School Boards as well. And they review all of the policies, okay, that come up for review and then they send them out to the district. So we are not the only district that is getting that policy update.
Correct. I would, I would imagine 99.9 of our policies will be identic, why do I even say, we'll say 99 are identical because we'll tweak things, uh, like maybe the, the, the first one, anti-discrimination harassment policy to who it's reported to. Um, I tend to put to the officer because at the reorg meeting, that's where you might change a name so you don't have to change a policy or another district might put the person's name in the policy. But really they're, they're very identical because they're based on laws, the majority of them.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
One more, just, um, as you, um, just kind of going back on some of the questions that were raised tonight, could you, um, as the appropriate administrator, could you copy the board on your responses to the questions that were received tonight? If you don't mind doing that.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll copy to you or there might be some I just called because of the brevity of them and then I'll just give you an update on what the conversation was with the individual.
Great. Thank you.
I might not get to all of them tomorrow, so it might not be in this Friday packet. It might be in next week's Friday packet, just so you know, just thinking about, um, you know, the schedule, what I have planned this week.
Is there any other discussion on agenda items?
Just one, um, so and policies are on the board agenda because...
We received from Erie, Erie One Boses's policy saying this is one that has had to change and needs to be updated. The only, if we were ever to initiate one, what we would actually do is we would send it to Erie One and review this policy for us to see if there's any changes. And then if they recommended a change with, working with their lawyers, then we would bring it back to the board. But all the ones for this entire year, you know, the 20, 2020, 21 school year have all been recommendations from Erie One policy.
And it's a requirement that the board review them and, and approve them, right?
It's, it's one of the major functions of a board, any board of education, is to review the policies and update them. Um, it, it's the, the framework in which I work and that's what the board checks and then we come up with the procedures of how we take care of it.
And it's unique because I serve on the Erie Two Boses's board and I also serve on the policies committee. And what we actually do is we, uh, review different policies which are actually coming out of Erie One and we have our own attorney from Erie Two, uh, Boses, sitting at the meeting and he'll attempt to answer questions, but if there's questions that he can't answer, sometimes he has to go back to Erie One for the explanation because they were the ones that, uh, worked with the policy directly from New York State School Boards and SED where the guidelines are coming from.
So my guess is you're seeing the, you're seeing twice a month, the exact same policies at two different locations.
Many of them, yes.
But it's also really beneficial to use Erie One for that policy service because they're monitoring new laws coming out of, um, the legislature constantly, right? And that is one of the board's main, I mean, we, we are responsible for fiscal oversight and policy, right? Those are really the only two things that the board is responsible for. And hiring the superintendent.
Hiring me.
So that you can do all the other stuff, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, um, I don't have a fact as I just know conversations I have as I go to state organization meetings that Erie One policy is known throughout the state as being a premier, one of the premier groups for this, this, um, one service they provide to districts. There's a lot of cross-contracts they get around the state to take care of it.
Yeah, and I was just thinking, like, listening to Dave talk about it, had, if we did this in-house, we would need an attorney monitoring all the legislature, all the legislation coming out of New York State and the federal government and then a policy writer on staff. And then, I mean, it would be impossible to keep up with.
You also have the SED regulations as well that are included.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if somebody can regulate a school district, they are hopping on board. It's crazy.
So if there is no more discussion, then I would, I will move on to our consensus agenda. Um, is there a request to withdraw specific items from the agenda? Uh, we need a motion would be required to add item 11.5.18.
So move, Jane.
Second, Chuck.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 And item C, that we request a motion to approve the consensus agenda items 11.2 through 11.5.18.
So move, Jane.
Second, Dave.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Noes?
Aye.
I think we are all doing the exact same thing.
Very last page, Paige.
Yep.
I know, I think I may have...
I think it's looking for a recognition of guests for any topic not on the agenda.
I found it. Paige, it fell on the floor. Sorry. All right. At this point, we have our, do we have any recognition of guests for items that are on any topic?
Nope.
All right. And would we need to move into an executive session?
Nope.
All right. And we need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
So move, Chuck.
Second, Jane.
Please.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Noes? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
And thank you to everyone that watched from at home and thank you to the ones who showed up today.
Thank you, everybody.
Hi. Nice to see everybody and I'm glad that we have some community involvement. Thank you.